Welcome everyone to our regular board meeting tonight. We've got a big agenda, lots to discuss, lots to talk about. Welcome to the folks that are attending and welcome to the folks that are watching us on live stream tonight as we conduct some town business. At this time, we'll call a meeting to order. Please rise everyone for Pastor Trey Harris, our application and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I'd like to read some scripture from Bellegio's chapter two, just to open up with our prayer as well. Says, "Let each of us look not to our own interest, but to the interests of others, let the same mind be in you that was in Jesus Christ." He would let us pray. Our God, we come to you tonight, give you thanks and praise for the blessing of this day. I come before you as a humble servant, letting up our elected officials of Hope Mills, especially Mayor Bell Flowers and our commissioners. God may they heed your word here in Bellegio's too, so that they may serve the people here with their servant's heart like Christ. I pray that they will leave this wonderful town with integrity and continue to fulfill the responsibilities of their office with godly character. Tonight grant them wisdom so that they will be able to distinguish clearly between what is right and what is wrong for the citizens they are in charge of. For your ways, oh God, are true and right, and we desire for our leaders to exhibit humility and to do your will. May we all give you the glory and the honor as you bless us, keep us and protect us through all the days of our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Applause.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our pledge of allegiance tonight comes from Boy Scouts of America, and they are Hannah Fly, Troop 716G, Alex Porcel, Troop 716B, and I hope I don't butcher these names, I'm not good on them. Apologies in advance, Elliot Bros from 716B, Brandon Lee, 716B, and Zachary Spaulding from 716B. About a round of applause for our scouts. Every one of our regular board meetings, we invite the scouts to come in and lead us in pledge of allegiance, especially it's very momentous this week being the eightieth anniversary of D-Day. That is symbolic of this week, and we'll read a proclamation about that tonight. Okay, next item or first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We go into item number two, official comments, and that will start off with Chancellor and the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. On our manager's report in the community corner, you have the gun violence awareness walk set for Saturday, June 8th, 9:00 a.m. here at Hope Mills in Mississippi Park. It'll be facilitated by the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Chapter of Tau Epsilon Zeta Chapter of Hope Mills, North Carolina. You also have the splash pad ribbon cutting taking place tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. I will not say anything about rain, even though I just said something about rain. Our baseball team had their opening day, Hope Mills Rockfish on May 25th, 2024. Their schedule for the summer is in our manager's report. We're also keeping the Liberty and Legacy Celebration, which is our Juneteenth celebration in the manager's report, June 15th Dirtbag Allen from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Also in the manager's report is page two, is a very detailed breakdown of all of the grants that we've submitted for so far through the North Carolina League of Municipalities Grant with O'Brien. To date, we've submitted for a total of about four grants in the last couple of months, equaling about a little over $300,000, $400,000. We're gearing up for another grant this week. You also see the Parks and Recreation update with two new canopies that were installed by the splash pad between the Olympic playground and the splash pad. In terms of public works, there's their lane closures starting this Saturday, June 8th, at 8:00 p.m. until June 10th at 6:00 a.m. Eastbound Lane of Main Street and the Northbound Lane, Far East Lane of Golf U. Multi-use path is under construction. To date, they've utilized total of $44,000. The Veterans Memorial Park parking lot is actually paved. They're still doing some minor fixes with that. And on the last page, you have your FAMCO NCBLT construction updates as well. That concludes my manager's report.
Thank you, Chancellor. We'll move on to item D, Board Member Comments. We'll start with Commissioner Craver.
Good evening and welcome tonight to all those that are here and those that are watching at home. And I hope you will enjoy our meeting. Thank you for coming.
Okay, Commissioner Marley?
Oh, ahead of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schweller.
It's good to see so many faces in the crowd this evening. It's good day to be here.
Okay, last but not least, just back from Japan, our Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Kenwan McCray.
Thank you, Mayor Bellflowers. Again, it's great to see everyone. Manager, Town Manager, covered all the updates that I would have had in his report, and it is good to be back home.
Thank you. The only comments I have, and I'm going to hold it up, this manager's report continues every regular meeting to be more and more detailed. Now it's up to three pages, almost three and a half pages, as it continues to detail all the various events that are going on within the town and all the projects that we've got going on in the town in this true spirit of transparency. On Memorial Day, we had probably one of the largest ceremonies that we have had in years, and even though it wasn't outside, it was in the gym, it was still well attended by our community, and it continues to show us that event after event after event is starting to be well attended here in our town. And we've got a big one tomorrow, long awaited one tomorrow at 4:00. The Town Manager talked about it. It's a ribbon cutting at the splash pad, and I'm sure that a lot of kids are looking forward to it. And hopefully we'll have a lot of attendance for that. And of course, Juneteenth coming up on June 15th as well. Okay, so that's all I have. We're going to go into presentations, which is the next item, but we're doing a little something different. And from here on, we're going to try to move around the proclamation. I have learned, yes, I have, I have learned that the proclamations must be read into the record, but they don't have to be read by the same person. So, and I give credit to learning that from Ashley. She educated me on that today, and she says, "Look, Mayor, you don't have to read them all." And I said, "Well, I know they have to all be read in the record." That is true, but you can move them around and get other folks to read them. So I'm going to kick off the one, first one tonight with something that is very touching and dear to me, so I hope I can get through it. It is the proclamation for the eightieth anniversary of D-Day, June 3rd, 2024, whereas on June 6th, 1944 Allied Forces launched Operation Overlord, the code name for the massive Allied invasion of Normandy, France, with more than 150,000 troops, a day now known as the greatest amphibious landing in history. And whereas led by General Dwight D. Eisenhower, 12 nations landed on five beaches designated Sword, Juneau, Gold, Omaha, and Utah, Americans violently stormed and secured Omaha and Utah with more than 2,500 killed in action. And whereas just after midnight, more than 2,200 American, Canadian, British bombers began heading targets at the beaches and further inland in an effort to destroy, disrupt defenses. And whereas around 02:30, 2:30 in the morning for some people, the 82nd and the 101st Airborne parachuted into Normandy, quickly securing key crossroads and bridges, creating confusion and blocking German reinforcements heading towards the coast. San Grace was the first town to deliberate at securing a vital foothold of the continent peninsula. And whereas a naval armada consisting of 6,939 vessels per Allied forces across the English Channel, more than 1,200 warships bombed the coastline providing cover to the more than 4,100 landing craft that carried the invasion force to the beaches. And whereas the second Ranger Battalion, Rangers lead the way, commanded by Lieutenant Colonel James Rutter, scaled to 90-foot cliffs, appointed to hark with grapple hooks, ropes, ladders to destroy the coastal gun battery located at the top while the guns been moved, the aggressive ingenuity of the Rangers quickly located and destroyed the gun. Whereas about 16 million Americans served during World War II, with approximately 389,000 still alive, it is estimated that there are 189 World War II veterans in Cumberland County. And now therefore be it resolved that I Jesse Bellflowers, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and in memory of the thousands of American men and women who have become known as the greatest generation, who have answered the call of duty on this pivotal day in our history defending freedom, liberating the world from hearing and oppression, proclaim this third day of June 2024. I served in Germany as a member of the United States Army for three and a half years. And I can tell you, there's two soldiers in this room that are dog-faced soldiers. I'm one of them because I served 3rd Infantry Division. Former Commissioner Greeley Mitchell is another one. He's a dog-faced soldier as well. Are you a dog-faced soldier as well?
I'm a soldier.
Thank you for your service. And I've got another 3rd Infantry Division, which was the Rock of the Mar, that was instrumental in deliberation of Germany. And I just wanted to bring that to a highlight because it's special to me to have served there in Germany and to know what freedom looks like. And I gotta get this out, because I was there when the Berlin Wall came down. And that is a hallmark that I cherish myself, the first time that freedom was extended against. It was just a very tough period to see that happen and to see the liberation of not only Germany, but all the countries in World War II. And it was all because of the greatest generation of Americans who this very week left their homes, left England, got in a bunch of boats, and landed on five beaches. And if you can imagine what that feeling probably was for those Americans who did that. So is Commander Jim Morris here from Post 10630?
He's not here.
He's not here? Okay. Our next proclamation is recognizing Hope Mills Gun Violence Awareness, and that one goes to Commissioner Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day for Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc., Tau Epsilon Zeta Chapter. Whereas guns are the leading cause of death among children and teens in North Carolina. An average of 156 children and teens die by guns every year, of which 32% of these deaths are suicides and 62% are homicides. Source, everystat.org. Whereas according to the National Center for Health Statistics in 2021, 1,839 North Carolinians were killed by guns. And whereas in 2021, there were 690 mass shootings in the U.S. And whereas, the rate of gun deaths has increased by 47% from 2012 to 2021 in North Carolina. This means that in 2021, there were 664 more gun deaths than in 2012. Source, CBC, underlying cause of death, 2012 to 2021. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills and the Board of Commissioners have shown support to study the effects of gun violence in our local community. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills and the Board of Commissioners, in cooperation with the Fayetteville Police Department, Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, and Cumberland County area communities develop and support community programs to reduce gun violence and crime incidents related to gun violence in neighborhoods. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills and Board of Commissioners members, in cooperation with the Fayetteville Police Department, Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, and Cumberland County area communities foster positive relationships between the police department, sheriff department, and citizens to reduce gun violence and crime by hosting community engagement events like the National Night Out, Gun Violence Awareness Walk. And whereas the community-conscious, action-oriented organization, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc., Tau Epsilon Zeta Chapter, chartered on May 31st, 2003, in Hope Mills, North Carolina, seeks to take an active partnership with the Town of Hope Mills to raise awareness on key issues such as gun violence. The Get Engaged Social Action Committee of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc., Tau Epsilon Zeta Chapter, boy, horrible, will partner with the Town of Hope Mills to host a Gun Violence Awareness Walk on June 8th, 2024, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Tau Epsilon Zeta recognizes that one life lost to gun violence is one too many. The walk will educate the community about gun violence and unite the community as we walk in memory of those who have lost their lives to gun violence. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc. has a national initiative to inspire, encourage, and build relationships between the community and elected officials. Furthermore, the Tau Epsilon Zeta Chapter continues to be an integral part of the Hope Mills community, working in conjunction with the town's educational, civic, cultural, and economic ideals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Jesse Bellflowers, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do proclaim June 7th, 2024, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in Hope Mills, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens, proclaim this day, third day of June 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Schweller. Our next one is proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, and that will be read by Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray.
Mayor Bellflowers, how I present this to them?
Yes, you may.
And if you will come down to join me. Lady, would you please come forward, please, so that I can present this proclamation to you?
While I'm out here, for anyone else who served in our, in our nation's military, this is a special week, and a honor to you as well.
And we just ask if you do attend the event on Saturday, if you will wear orange, I will be participating in the event in honor of my brother who lost his life to gun violence over 25 years ago, along with every person in the world who has lost their lives due to gun violence. And now I will proceed with the Juneteenth proclamation. Whereas at 2:00 p.m. on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, using his war powers as President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then bens forward and forever free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery a Union Army, a Union War aimed at providing the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly 4 million slaves as the Union Army advanced. And whereas Juneteenth, a blending of the words June and 19th, is the oldest known U.S. celebration of the end of slavery. It commemorates June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between formal masters and slaves and the connection heretofore existing between them, becomes that between employer and higher labor, the freedmen are advised to remain at their present homes and work for wages. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. And as free families immigrated to Texas, to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas Al Edwards, a freshman state representative, put forth the bill HB 1016 in 1979, making Texas a first state to grant this Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas in 2021, Juneteenth became a federally recognized holiday, and the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners voted to observe the holiday in Hope Mills as well. Now therefore, we, the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, do proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth in Hope Mills.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray. Our last one tonight is proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. And how fitting this proclamation is, given we're about to have a ribbon cutting on a splash pad in North Fort V. This proclamation be read by Commissioner Craver.
Proclamation, this nation of July is Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Hope Mills. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote time spend in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourage physical activities, providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are crucial to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Hope Mills recognizes the benefit derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore be it resolved by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Hope Mills, proclaim this the third day of June 2024, by Jesse Bellflowers, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. That concludes our presentations. We'll go into item number four, which is probably one of the highlights of tonight's meeting. And we are finally here at the public hearing for our proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. There are three parts to this discussion tonight. One of them is for public input. That's why we have a public hearing, and that's why it's open, the first part. The second part is going to be turned over to our Town Manager and Town Finance Director for any comments that they want to add before the motion comes to the Board for action. So that's the three parts for tonight. So the question I have first is, and this is to the Board, do we have a motion to open the public hearing for fiscal year 2024, 2025 Town Operating Budget?
Motion to open public hearing?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in favor of the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 Town Operating Budget? If so, please come forward to the mic, state your name, address, and share your comments. Again, I will ask, is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Seeing none? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 Town Operating Budget? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and share your comments. I will ask again, is there, is there anyone that wants to speak against the proposed budget? Motion to close? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Before I turn it over to Chancellor, I will say that for three weeks, the town has had an online portal where any citizen not here tonight could render a comment either for or against, or reference or question to the town for clarification of tonight's proposed budget. The portal was closed at about 6:00, and there have been no responses in the three weeks that the portal was open for the transparency of the town and the budget. With that said, I'm going to turn this part over to Chancellor Drew, and then come back to the Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Fortune over to you. I'd just like to commend our mayor and our board. We did something a little different this year. We started in January where we started off with a Priorities Dinner, where all of the department heads were given the opportunity that they're very thankful for, to present the priorities of the departments to the board. That yielded a very That yielded a very fruitful and ongoing conversation with our legislature. We also, this board also guided us through a pay study that we had done in decades in town of Hope Mills that led us to a budget retreat, that led us to a budget workshop, and we are presiding today over the largest budget in Hope Mills, Texas. And so I definitely want to commend our staff, who work tirelessly every day to provide the must-do services to our citizens. We could not have done this without each other, with your guidance, with their hard work, and with my finance director, who I call the grand poobah of finance. We, this was something that was done together, something that we've all accomplished in concert with each other. So I turn it over to Drew to talk to you about the budget. And I will repeat again, we did something different this year specifically by having an online portal that allowed for the citizens to have input well in advance. We hadn't received any negative input or positive input, but that is something that we, in the spirit of transparency, that we're going to continue to offer to our citizens. So now I'll turn it over to Drew.
Okay, based on the comments that we had from the council at the budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, all those changes are reflected into the final budget that they'll be decided over tonight, and I'll just go over those changes right now. We moved all committees, all the accounts set by committees under government body. We moved five hundred dollars from marketing to employee appreciation and administrative department. We added five hundred dollars to fire prevention in the fire department. We changed the account name for Dixie Youth Baseball to Diamond Youth Baseball. We moved fifteen thousand from the Cultural Arts Committee to the July Fourth Celebration. And we added five thousand dollars to police cadet training in the police department. So those are the only changes that were made to the budget. I verified those with the town clerk. That's what they had written down, and that's what I had written down. And the ones where we added the funds, the police cadet training and the fire prevention on the revenue side, I bumped up, that's fifty-five hundred dollars. The amount that we get for the alcohol tax on the county came in last week, and it was about six thousand dollars more than what we got last year. So I bumped up that revenue line on fifty-five hundred dollars to make up for that difference. So those are the changes that we added. I just want to say, do we have any other questions from the council about the budget?
Are there any questions for Drew before we go into discussion? Just questions for Drew. Commissioner Swallow?
I just want to get clarification because I'm done the meeting, remember I mentioned about five hundred dollars for the chamber?
Right.
We never, we never had the line on separately? Just trying to get.
It wasn't ever decided as the council do that. There was discussion, but it never was said.
Too easy. No, that worked for me. Too easy.
Any other questions for Drew or for Chancellor before we go into board discussion?
Okay, well, I'd just like to say as far as the budget process this year, I think it went well. Again, we have a balanced budget that we submitted. This is my eighth budget here for the town of Hope Mills, and I think it's gone well, and I appreciate all the departments, the staff, the finance department for helping us get to this point.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Chancellor. Before I ask the, the two motions, and there are two of them, we will have a motion to adopt, and then we'll have a motion to adopt the fee schedule. Want to start off with board comments? And I'll start with Commissioner Marley.
I don't really have too many comments. I'm pretty happy with the budget. There is a tax increase in the budget that is going to help, currently I'm wrong, Drew, that tax increase is going to help fund the pay study to make the necessary adjustments to our county employees. I felt, felt like that was much needed, and I'm sure the rest of the board felt like that was much needed. As the manager said, we haven't, the board hasn't done that in years. So I feel like that was a good thing for employees, and that is much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Swallow?
It's always a struggle what we do, not being, this is my third year on the board, but to decide to increase taxes, it's never an easy thing. I don't know, those who remember last year, the struggle we were dealing with. But I'm trying not to make it a regular thing. It's, sometimes it's really needed, and I think for our, our first responders and our staff to get rightly compensated is appropriate. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallow. Commissioner Craver?
I would wish I could vote for the budget. However, if I vote, vote for the budget, that means it is five cents per one hundred evaluation property taxes added onto our residents. The police and the employees, we've already voted on that, they will get their raises. But I feel like there's places in the budget that could be cut that would cover that. So in saying that, I'm going to have to vote no against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray?
I would just like to say I will be voting in favor of the budget. I think that we have worked for months on balancing this budget. The pay study did include an increase for our employees for payment, particularly our police department and fire department, which we agreed to pay them a little bit earlier than we did the other staff members. And as you can look, a lot of municipalities around us are doing the same thing. So I definitely believe that that was the right move to make. I also believe that this year, as tonight, we're going to discuss this dilemma that we're in with the SRO officers, and we dealt with, we will next year deal with the app alarm money being taken away from us. And there's been a number of other things that have come up this year, and I believe as a municipality or business, as of our size, I think it's time for us to increase our taxes. I think that there will always be emergencies and things that come up, and I think that we need to be prepared to deal with that. In fact, we are several years behind of doing that. And so our staff has worked tirelessly to work with the grant lady, Ingrid, to try to find grants. We have met extensively with our legislators, trying to tap into funds and dollars for the town of Hope Mills. So I believe that we have done all that we can to try to service, because that is what we provide. We provide services for our citizens, and the way that we provide the services is through our employees. And so we have to pay them, and we have to repay them. And so for those holy reasons and many others that I'm probably forgetting to say, I will support this budget, and I thank the staff, and I thank this board, and the mayor for all of the hard work you have done for months working on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray. Thank each board member for your comments tonight. Drew, his eighth budget that he's put together. The last time the property tax was raised in Hope Mills was about twelve years ago. That goes as a testament to show that the town has been not good, but excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars. We had several headwinds coming into this year, coming into December and January. One of them was the pay study. One of them was the change of sales tax revenue, which will hit this town in a year from now. The other one was grant opportunities. And immediately, we jumped on the grant rider opportunities immediately, and that has really helped out this operating budget, which is eighteen million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, the largest in the history of this town. It also goes to tell you this, is that over those twelve years, look at the population growth. Look at the tremendous amount of residential and commercial growth that has chosen Hope Mills to live, work, and operate. We are the chosen municipality, and this budget shows that. True, it has a five cent property tax increase that's in it. There is no way that we could have balanced this budget and given support to a pay study that was also last conducted about ten years ago. So you got a pay study that was last done ten years ago. You got a last property tax increase was twelve years, and I hope we can go twelve more years through, that's your challenge, is to take us twelve years from now without a property tax increase. But here's one thing that I want to say, is that even though this budget has a property tax increase included tonight, a year from now, if our revenues change, we can do the very same thing a year from now and lower property taxes. We can do that. Now, a lot of folks don't talk about that, but that is something that municipalities can do when we adopt budgets. So those are my comments tonight about the budget. We kicked it off in January, just as the town manager said, Mayor Protem, and the board members. We got aggressive this year. We had a change of direction of how we wanted, as I say, get after it because of the headwinds. You either got one or two choices. You can either be proactive or sit on your hands. We were proactive, and we have been for five months in various workshops. Not everything got included in this budget. If I was to ask Drew what it started out, it surely was at eighteen million. Probably add ten to that. Probably add about ten to that from the departments, because that's what's realistic. I think he may even have that number, what it started out as.
Twenty million, five hundred and six.
How much?
Twenty million, five hundred and six.
That was close. That's what it started out, and look where it came down to. And that's because of our hard work. Mayor Protem is exactly correct. Our greatest assets in this town are our town employees. We cannot provide services without our town employees. And before we get to the SRO issue, which is on the agenda tonight, all law enforcement agencies and municipalities are experiencing shortages, all of them, not just Hope Mills, all of them. In public safety, you're seeing vacancies, especially in our police departments. And that was the main strength behind the pay study that we jumped on in December going into January. And I commend this for each of us, including Commissioner Gary Live, who is not with us tonight. We took something on, and we took it on in a few months, and we were aggressive with it. And all we asked was for our town employees to trust us, have confidence in us, and believe that we would get through it, and we did. And that is reflected in this budget tonight. First motion I have, do we have a motion to adopt the proposed town operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So who?
Do we have a second? We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The vote is three to one, the motion passes, we have an adopted budget. The second motion I have tonight is do we have a motion to adopt the proposed fee schedule as part of the town operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So who?
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Four O, both motions are carried tonight. I think I got it right, Dan, on both motions. Congratulations. All right, thank you for that, and hopefully know we'll have it next year. Next item on the agenda is public comments. We have two folks that have signed up tonight. Is it Irene? Who's first? Irene, and you got to spell your last name, because I can't hardly pronounce it. Crimes? Please come forward. State your name, of course, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Irene Grimes. I'm at thirty-nine eighteen Colorado Drive, where I live in Hope Mills. I left my notes in hopes that you're going to get very short, three minutes. As some of you know, I serve on the Board of Elections, and I'm here to ask you for something tonight, but not money. So nothing to do with the budget. As you all know, we have like the little matter of an election coming up in November. The Board of Elections is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six hundred coworkers short. Yes, many of our coworkers, coworkers have been with us for many, many years. They're sort of aging out. And there are some other factors, as you all know, you know, it's all over the news what's going on with coworkers. I want to talk about a program that the Board of Elections has that allows young people aged seventeen or older to work for the Board of Elections on Election Day. This year, schools are not going to be in session on Election Day, so that would be a perfect opportunity for anybody who will be seventeen before November fifth to come work with us. We love having them. They get paid the same as every other coworker. We provide training, and really now is the time to sign up. So I want your kids, your grandkids, your nieces and nephews, your acquaintances, everybody. I was a coworker for many, many years, and honestly, it's one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. Some of you all know that I'm an immigrant as well as a, as a former soldier. And it was my way of sort of learning how democracy works. And for those who have some doubts about whether elections work the right way, this is the best way for you to find out. So come work for us and, you know, have a blast that day.
Irene?
Yes.
Could you send some information about?
I have it right here.
Okay, send it to Ashley, our clerk. We'll push it out on the sunshine list as well.
That would be fabulous. I have both for sureers for adult coworkers as well as youngsters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How much does it pay? Those are the important questions, I think.
Yeah, please, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty dollars for that day. Yeah. An elected volunteer could do that.
No.
That, that's the only exception, is you cannot be an election official, you can not be an elected official, and you cannot be the spouse of an elected official.
But you can be a child, a volunteer.
You can be a child.
Or a granddaughter.
Yeah.
Or a grandson.
I'll be honest, just very briefly, I'll be honest with you. We, I loved having young people in my precinct. There was a whole different dynamic. You know, we sent them donuts all day and all that, but there was a whole different dynamic. They know the technology, and, and it makes the day go faster, and it makes the day better.
They know the technology, and it makes the day go faster, and it makes the day better. Irene, are you helping some outreach to the schools? I'm trying. It's a little bit tricky with schools because because we're an appointed board. It's a little bit tricky, but we're trying. Yeah, we're going around to everybody who will listen to us. You know, we're going to be a Juneteenth, we're going to be a pride, we're going to be everywhere. And I'll probably invite you all from organizations to things that I'm a part of, or that have the good people. You know, almost everybody in the county has my phone number. And for those three people that do not, call the Board of Elections, and they will patch you through to me. But I will go anywhere, anytime. I believe in elections, and I believe I believe that they work when we participate. And when I first became an American citizen, I knew nothing about politics, so that's how I got into elections. And honestly, it is the best thing I ever did.
Irene, do you do offer education classes to get them prepared for that, correct? And they also get paid for doing that?
Absolutely. And that's why I'm here now, because training will take place in August and September. So I know it's not ideal, but the schools are out and all that. But I'm hoping that if I go everywhere, somebody will hear me, you know? So, but yeah, we'll train, and nobody is left on their own. There is always experienced people there that help people along the way.
Irene, that's why I was asking you to send that electronics information over to Ashley. We can really push it out that way.
Okay.
You'd have been here last week at our special meeting. We had all seven principals from Hope Mills Schools in this room.
I watched you, so I saw that.
Thank you, Irene. Next is Ron Lance.
I'm gonna give you a couple of these, and if you give me your email address, I'll email them to you.
Okay.
My name is Ron Lance. I'm a five zero two four, Jefferson Walk Road. I'm here tonight, I know some schedule, we're talking about the SOR. That's Bob O's tonight. And I just wanted to make sure that we are talking about them, and has anything been heard from the sheriff anymore?
There would be a no.
Okay, and second?
Appreciate it, I'll see you often.
Maybe I should come up during the budget talk. We've passed a budget tonight. Is that included with crossing guards and the SORs? Are they in that budget, or it's gonna be a supplemental?
No, sir, they're not in this budget, until that actually will be brought back to the board for consideration from proposal from the school board. We're not at that point yet.
We need them, we need them in September. Understand that's when school starts?
But we do have on agenda tonight is a grant opportunity. And that's a
I'll wait for them.
It's a big one. If you look at the agenda tonight, that grant opportunity is there.
And I'm a Marine, too.
Simplify, sir. Okay, that will close public comments. Next item up is the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval at the Board of Commissioners May six, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. And May twenty, twenty twenty-four, special budget meeting workshop minutes, tab seven. Item B, acceptance of monthly finance report, April twenty twenty-four, under tab eight. C, approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four zero seven, fixing date of public gearing for annexation. A twenty twenty-four dash three, Duncan Southview Holdings LLC portion of zero four two four dash two four dash four zero four nine, that's under tab nine. And D, approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four zero eight, declaring certain property of the town to be surplus and authorized in disposal of said property under tab ten. Is there any board member wants to move anything off the consent agenda or approve consent agenda as proposed?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second? Have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion about consent agenda? All in favor? See, none opposed? Consent agenda is approved as presented. Old business is next. Approval of Tiffany Bryson to the Hope Mills Prime Movers and Dr. Tara Jordan to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and as Board of Adjustment alternate member to fill an unexpired term through September twenty twenty-five. That's under tab eleven, and I will give that one to Commissioner Bryson.
Mr., may I like to move that we approve Tiffany Bryson to the Hope Mills Prime Movers and Dr. Tara Jordan to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and as the Board of Adjustment alternate member to fill in the unexpired term through September twenty twenty-five?
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? See, none opposed? Congratulations, Tiffany Bryson, to the Hope Mills Prime Movers and Dr. Tara Johnson to the Parks and Rec Committee, and as Board of Adjustment alternate member to fill an unexpired term through September twenty twenty-five.
And I'd like to say that we are very, very close in having all of our committees at the number seven committee.
How about that?
Ashley gave me that, and I think there's got like two or three committees that's just short on it. I feel like we're gonna get that.
Moving on to new business, our first item is, A, consideration of acceptance of human resources paid for rental lease policy, tab twelve. That item will belong to Chancer and Leanne.
Unfortunately, Leanne just want to commend her. She hasn't been hit up on, and she is rocking and rolling, creating policies and moving this town forward. She has brought stability to our HR department. This is something that we were talking about in the pay study before she was actually hired. And before I could look up, she had a policy already created. So definitely want to commend her before I turn it over.
Hello. There's two documents in there, I did a kind of a highlight, and then those full volume, so I'll leave it to you to ask if you have any questions?
Any board member have any questions on our proposed?
I just think it's well done and much needed, so thank you.
Yeah, I looked at the policy, too, and it's been a long time coming. It was detailed, it's very easy to follow, easy to explain. And you're right, it is one of the most sought-out benefits packages in a municipality or any business, is the rental the rental lease policy, the paid rental lease policy. So, any other comments? Yep, go ahead.
I think this will definitely help with recruiting and retention for staff. So I think this is really, really needed. I remember I talked with Chancer about it once before, and sure enough, here it is. So this is really good.
There was a survey conducted, our employees are reconducted, and this was an item that was on the list. So this is just the beginning. We've got a lot of work to do, but we're trying to put our heads together, get creative ways to retain our employees, because you've mentioned a couple times, they're really a pup on the town, so.
When I read this, I was actually shocked that we didn't already have that.
It's actually not as common as, I think, people think. It is getting there. The state has a policy, Fayetteville, FCCC has a policy. It's slowly growing in momentum. So I'm very proud of what we're doing.
Well, it's correct. It's part of the recruitment and retention tools for our town. And if you have a survey, you'll find the deficit rank up in any survey in any municipality or business. So well done, Leanne, continue your surveys. Continue bringing back policy changes to not only recruit but retain our town's greatest asset, and that's our employees. Thank you. Do I have a motion? To accept the human resource paid for rental lease policy, tab twelve is presented. Motion's made, second? Any discussion? All in favor? See, none opposed, motion carries. Next item is B, approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, application in match for Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program, CHP Law Enforcement Officer Salaries. That's under tab thirteen. And this one, item will belong to Chancer.
This is something that's tied to the grant program that we're submitting this week. Drew will speak to some of the documents that we have put together. And I think Donald may be available as well, but this is all part of the grant program that we're submitting through, with a brand.
Right, we've been working on this for the past while. And what this does, the COPS program and how the grant works, is you have three officers, and the first year pays seventy-five percent of their salaries and benefit. The second year pays fifteen percent, the third year pays twenty-five. So it's a way to bring officers in, we don't have to put the entire bill. And we're applying for this. This is the part of the application process. It has the resolution we passed by, the council. And yeah, it's just a grant we're in the midst of.
Drew, I noticed that the award is three hundred and seventy-five thousand to support law enforcement officer hiring. But we have to have a twenty-five percent local cash match of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Okay, so I don't believe that was included in.
It's not. What we'll do is, once the grant is approved, we'll do a budget amendment added to the budget at that time. I asked questions today, but HRC and the police seems like this isn't in the budget. It's like it's not been approved yet. So we have to wait until we get it before we can add it to the budget.
There was a question that I had earlier, too, and I shared with Chancer and Ford.
And we're getting grants first.
Just wanted to make sure that we were clear that if we are awarded, which hopefully we will be, then
We'll add it at that time.
I'll add the one twenty-five at that time. Any other discussion from board members?
I'll do a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
Second? Have a motion, have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? See, none opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Drew. Next item is item C, consideration of approval for equipment purchase using federal drug forfeiture funds and corresponding budget amendment number twenty-four in the amount of five thousand, four hundred dollars, under tab fourteen. Any discussion? Any questions about this item? I noticed there was a couple items I thought was already in a requested budget, but you're getting them this year. Chief?
Can you tell me about where it's turned to, sir? I know we're
Crime cam examiner.
Examiner for three thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
That's the camera, right. Yeah, that enables us to, so it wasn't budgeted because we've been used to the lease of money for it, which needs to meet specific requirements. And what this camera does is it allows, many times in assaults, especially domestic violence, where maybe a victim's choked or something, any bruises don't show up for a few days. This camera captures those bruises immediately. So we're able to help our victims a lot better and capture the injuries that they have. So it uses special technology where you can actually see hand marks and punch marks and stuff like that before they even surface naturally through the body.
The other item is a covert track for a thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
That's an investigative tool.
Okay, we'll leave it there. See, a little bit of money like this can buy two needed pieces of equipment otherwise that wasn't in the budget that we couldn't have purchased. So this is a really good thing and a good way to spend those types of dollars that come in from drug forfeiture funds. Do we have a motion? Have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? See, none opposed? Moving on. Item D is consideration of approval for audit contract to Sharp Patel CPA for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, tab fifteen. I know this belongs to you, Drew.
Yep, I might as well just stay upfront on that. Yeah, this is the annual audit contract, audit contract. We did an R and P last spring and had new auditors. We did a five-year overall contract with them. And each year, we still have to have an individual contract referred to for each individual. So this is the audit for the, it'll be the audit for this fall, for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
I can't remember, but is this the same account from the initial question?
Yes, we cut it down for the next five years. So this is year two of five.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor and staff to sign a contract to with Sharp Patel CPA to do our audit contract for twenty twenty-four.
Second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? See, none opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approval of acceptance of multi-use path construction services bid tabulation as evaluated and authorized town manager to execute a contract with Morgan Trucking and General Construction Incorporated under tab sixteen. I know this belongs to Don.
This is the project we've been working on for a number of years now to replace the asphalt walkway at the lake park. And it's going to go back as a ten-foot wide concrete multi-use path. In addition to that, we'll be doing some grading and a little bit more work in there to make it a hundred percent ADA compliant in addition to the replacement. You've got the bid tab there, it's pretty self-explanatory. One thing that I would like to point out is that Morgan Trucking, who is the lowest bidder, they are DOT certified, and the company, there will not be any subcontract, and the company as a whole is identified as a DVE. So we will have one of the few one-hundred percent DVE contracts in the county.
Don, will this, will this big complete the funding for the project?
Yes, we don't, we, well, I shouldn't say it. This will complete the construction. We also have another company coming in to do, it's called Construction Engineering Inspection. It is a third-party engineering firm that will do the inspections for both the workmanship and all the materials used, because DOT is a very cumbersome method where they do things. And that way, we make sure that we have everything done, because they have to do things such as Detroit surveys and stuff like that in addition to inspecting all the materials. So we felt it was prudent to have somebody that is experienced and doing all of that and covering with all the documentation that DOT requires.
And it's gonna be a separate contract, right? Separate funding.
Well, it's all one grant, but we broke it down. We had to break it down by engineering, CEI, and construction. But it depends out of what part, just broken down into separate lineups.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve item E?
Make a motion to accept the bid tabulation as evaluated and authorized the town manager to execute the contract for Morgan Trucking Company and General Construction, Inc., at the appropriate time.
Second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? See, none opposed? The motion carries. Item F, consideration of acceptance of FAMPO memorandum of understanding for cooperative, comprehensive, and continuing transportation planning. That's under tab seventeen. And that will go to Chancer. We'll start with Chancer.
Yes, we do have FAMPO representation here this evening. This is something that is going to all the municipalities for resolution approval. It was approved through the THC and TCC boards, but I'll let FAMPO representation speak a little bit more directly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelvin Rayford. I am a senior transportation planner with FAMPO, the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And on May the ninth, the board, the THC board, it approved our And on May 9th, the board, the THC board, it approved our boundary expansion, and that will include areas now, Irwin and a portion of Moore County will also now be in the FAMPO boundary, along with Fort Liberty. So the boundary was last expanded on December in 2014, and we're just asking you guys to consider this expansion, so we can move forward and help to grow FAMPO and to provide the services for the citizens within our jurisdiction.
Thank you, Commissioner Skowal. Do you have anything to add? Nothing? Chancellor?
Nothing, just speaking of how much of a pleasure it is to work with FAMPO and the staff, that very, very diligent. And is it okay to announce the Cameron Road sidewalk approval? I'll give you an update on another grant we just got awarded, and the next, and the next manager's report, but just want to commend them. They are very, very helpful with a lot of the things we do with FAMPO and facilitating the pedestrian grants. And we get every grant we've gotten so far, four sidewalks have come through a program with FAMPO.
In the town of Hope Mills, thanks for all the hard work that you put into the approval process. And we're so grateful that we are, that we are the recipients of grant funding on the Terry Park sidewalks. I believe in sidewalks. I believe in a walkable community. I truly, truly do. And we're not there.
Oh, we're not there.
But we are continuing to get there. Thank you, Kel. All right, I'll take care. Do we have a motion to approve Item F?
Mayor, let's make a motion for consideration of acceptance of the FAMPO memorandum of understanding for cooperative, comprehensive, and continuing transportation planning.
Have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We move on to Item G, which is a hot topic issue in our community, especially in the last couple of weeks. Item G is Discussion and Consideration to Conduct a Feasibility Study Regarding Student Resource Officers and Crossing Guards of Cumberland County School Board. It's under Tab 18. That is a presentation from the special meeting that was held last week. Before we get into the discussion piece, I want to read something to the board today. Cumberland County's Commissioners Regular Meeting wrap-up, summary of June 3 meeting this morning. And this is public too, so it's on the county website. Board of Commissioners Chairman Glenn Adams addressed recent communications related to the funding of school resource officers and crossing guards. He said the Cumberland County Sheriff is an elected official apart from the Board of Commissioners, and that while the board has budgetary authority, it does not have the authority to tell the sheriff how and where to deploy officers, or how to operate to Cumberland County Detention Center. Chairman Adams said the board did not have advance notice of the sheriff's decision to not, to not, to provide school resource officers and crossing guards in the municipalities, and that the sheriff's office contracts directly with the school system, which will have to decide how to proceed. In terms of funding, Chairman Adams said the board's direction to the county manager, that would be Clarence Greer, during last Thursday's budget work session, was to remove the funding for these school resource officers and crossing guards from the sheriff's office budget, because the sheriff's office provides this staffing, and that it does not take any money away from Cumberland County Schools. Chairman Adams also addressed recent comments about the lack of county representation during the meeting and hoped else to discuss the issue. Chairman Adams said he received an invitation to attend the meeting via email and responded to county officials that he would not be able to attend because of the board's scheduled work session, followed by another required commitment. Chairman Adams says, "This board has always done its best by citizens of this community and will continue to do that." That was a quote that he said today. So, given what I have just read from the Board of Commissioners meeting that occurred today, it doesn't appear to me that there has been any change of direction in the May 21st letter stating that effective the 1st of July, that the sheriff's office will no longer provide SROs and crossing guards to the municipalities of Hope Mills, the city of Beaville, and Spring Lake. There is a meeting scheduled this week, June 6th, at the Law Enforcement Center, that's Thursday, starting at 2:30. I sent an email today to the sheriff's office requesting if I could attend the meeting as mayor, along with Police Chief Dullinger. They responded, and I will read what the email says. "Mr. Bellflowers, the meeting being held at the Law Enforcement Center on June 6th is not a public meeting. Those that receive an invitation," which was only three police chiefs that I know of, and accounting schools, "will be the only ones in attendance. Thank you." So that kind of gives us the indication of where we are tonight, what we're asking the board tonight, is just, this is a big I and a big F, call it if. Because where we are now looks and appears that municipalities or a third-party untrained security force will have to provide security in the SRO duty and crossing guards in Hope Mills and our seven schools. That's what it appears as of now. I don't see any change, like, I don't see any transparency at all. Conducting or giving, giving our police chief the consensus to conduct a feasibility study at this point, and it's, it's free, it's, it's not going to cost the town any money to do this, and it's just look at what we've got now, and if we have to do this in August, when school starts, we'll have a plan in place. And that's all that this is. It's just a feasibility study, it's been very proactive, as we have been up until now, which I hope continues, because the safety of our kids in school is paramount. While you've got people in government agencies trying to figure it out, which they aren't, it appears that effective July 1st, the school board's going to have to figure it out, the county has to figure it out, and the municipalities will have to figure it out with some plan. So that's why this is on here tonight, is just by board action to come up with a feasibility study to look at what it's going to take to take this operation on if we have to. I'd rather have a plan in place now than not have any plan in place in August. So with that said, is there any discussion from board members?
Yes. First of all, if the sheriff doesn't take instructions from the county commissioners, we don't take instructions from the sheriff. We, as taxpayers, pay in our property taxes every year for operations of our schools. That includes SROs and crossing guards. Now, I think we should let the county board know, it's their buildings, it's their property, it's their responsibility to provide these services. And I would not agree to take on that, that responsibility out here in Hope Mills. And, and we should go and tell them, it's your responsibility handed.
Thank you, Commissioner Raiver. Any other board members? Commissioner Skowal?
I agree with Commissioner Raiver. I feel like we're being manipulated by, by the county. It's very unfair that we have to be manipulated to take accountability and responsibility for our children, the citizens' children. It's children. And, but I don't like being manipulated. Okay, you know, the sheriff wants to drop the ball, that's fine, but it's still that the fact that they had, the county had discussion on it, but they still don't give me a warm and fuzzy that they're doing anything about it. And it's like, why are they, why are they waiting? Like, are they waiting on us to see if we will take over? Because that's, again, just poor planning. But yeah, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Skowal. Anyone else?
Mel Bellflowers, I too, I saw the meeting last week. I've read newspaper articles about it. I do not like the way that this has been presented. I don't like the way it was presented at such short notice, but to me, it sounds like they're not going to come up with a plan. And I also heard Dr. Conley say that he came from a county where, an area where the municipalities actually were responsible for it. I didn't even know if you could do that, but apparently it is possible. And I don't think this is something we can just sit and wait for some, I don't like it. I don't like the presentation of it. I don't like the way it happened. I don't like the communication, or the lack of communication that we're getting about it. From some, the way I'm seeing it, is I guess the county took money from the sheriff's budget, and he probably said, "This is what I'm going to do, or what I need to do if I don't have this funding," and what we are experiencing as a result of that. I don't like it, but I feel like we do need to do something, because I don't think anybody is coming to save us. I just feel like that. Nobody's coming to save us. I don't like it. I don't like it. We're pretty much being, being held up to make a decision about something like this, especially since we just have to move on to budget season. I think it is an incredible financial responsibility for small municipalities, especially like us in Spring Lake, that's being a fact that that is. So I don't like it at all, just because I am going to agree to go along to do something about it. I don't like it, but I don't think that anybody is going to come save us at this point. I think we're going to have to figure out how to save ourselves.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray. Mr. Marley?
I just got a couple comments. I, I as well think that we do need a plan. I don't have no problem with doing feasibility study, so we can stay ahead of this thing and have a plan, but just a couple of comments. I understand that the county commissioners, and maybe they hear this and they'll respond back to it, since we can't get to the meeting, but I understand they moved up the $3 million back to their general fund that they took from the sheriff's office, funding from the sheriff's office, and took another $3 million back to the general fund. I'd like to know what their, what their intent, or their intentions are for that money. How are they going to use that money, because they budgeted it for the sheriff's office? So now they've just got $3 million extra sitting there. I'd like to know what they're going to use it for. And as far as elected officials go, I, I think the sheriff is a fine man. I have no personal issue with the sheriff. He's always been good to me, fair to me, anytime I needed to talk to him or call upon him. But as an elected official, and us being elected officials, we are subject to open meetings, anytime we get together. So my question is, how's an elected official holding a meeting that he is publicizing and then not be open? Not be an open thing? So that's, that's another question I would have, and hopefully somebody will respond back to that. I do feel like the municipalities in Franklin County are being strong-armed into this. I don't like it, I don't agree with it. I thank you if you were at the meeting and you heard my comments at the last, or at the special meeting. I am wholeheartedly not in favor of getting into the SRO business, but at the same time, like you said, we do need a plan, and we do need to look at it and start preparing for it. But as Dr. McCray said, I don't think the county right now, there's some changes at the meeting on the 6th. I don't think the county commissioners have a plan, and I don't think they're willing to do anything about it. I think they're going to hold our money, they're just going to hold our tax monies they took from us, they're going to hold that $3 million from us. And with that $3 million they took back in their general fund and our 1.9 meeting, they got a pretty good little, little mess, they can speak. But I'm just, I don't even know what to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. I agree with you. I don't know what to say either. It's a, on behalf of the kids in our schools, it's a kick in the teeth. It's about the, I don't want to get, Kel, I don't want to say something about that. Like, I'm a little passionate, I'm an old country boy, and that's about the best way I can describe it. Because that's what it is. It's nothing more than a kick in the teeth, where kids in three municipalities are being held as pawns, while you've got two agencies arguing and fighting with each other on a playground with toys. So one, one of them wants more toys, the other one won't give them more toys, so one's got toys, grabs their toys, leaves, and say, "Well, relax. You replace the toys the best you can." I will say again that the safety of our schoolchildren is paramount. I know what an SRO is and how important they are in schools, because I teach at Jack Brit. Dr. McCray, Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray has a member in Perdian area that teaches along with me at Jack Brit. We know what they are. They're not just officers. They're counselors, they're educators, they're friends, they're peacekeepers. They're much more than just someone wearing a badge and armed. They're a lifeline to the kids at that school. I don't believe our high schools deserve one SRO. They need two, given the time and the environment that we live in today, and you want to take the one out of the schools, you need to add one. You need to put two in our middle schools. With as much emphasis as we have in school safety today, I'll leave you with this note, though. Schools are saved until they're not. Would you agree with that, Chief? Anything you want to add, Chief? Because you're the only one going to be able to go to the meeting on Thursday. I try.
I wouldn't expect many answers coming from Thursday's meeting, anyway. This is a, this is a very complicated issue, because we're kind of being painted in their corner here, because, you know, if we elect to go SROs, then that means we're going to have to come up with staffing and funding and work that out with the schools. If we don't provide SROs, we're still going to be responsible for handling the calls at the school. So when someone calls 911, schools in our jurisdiction, we're going to have to send officers to those schools. That means we're going to have an increased call volume. Juvenile, in schools, juvenile cases are frequent, where they require further investigation. So that means we're going to have to have detectives assigned just to that, because rules that apply to juveniles are much different than investigating adult cases. Right now, we, we have detectives that can do that, but that, they don't specialize in that, and we would have to have somebody that specializes in that. So we're in a conundrum here, like, like Mayor Protem McCray said, somebody's going to have to do something, whether it's the school hires a third party, but like you said, they're going to be unarmed, no arrest powers, so really, they'll stand by until our officers get there. So we're... our officers get there, so, um, we're, we're in a situation.
That brings us to a question, Chief, that, that you just commented on. So if a school places a 911 call, the county sheriff is not going there?
According to that letter, um, according to that letter...
They're not even, they're not even gonna respond to a 911 call?
I haven't spoken to the sheriff. I, I'm, I'm not saying he's refusing to respond, um, that, that I don't know, but I do know, just like any other, um, location within city limits, if, if a call comes in right now, under their contract with the, this, the Board of Education supplying SROs, they handle calls, they also handle calls at the school, on bus stops and on buses, incidents on buses that occur within the town, or within all county, actually. But according to that letter, and I agree with Commissioner Craver, I don't think he has the authority to direct us to take those responsibilities, but he's kind of saying, "Well, we're not gonna do it," so, you know, sort of kind of leaving us in a spot, so if they call the police, um, we're gonna have to provide a response and a follow-up investigation, and make sure we do what we need to do as a professional law enforcement agency.
That's a key question to ask during your June 6th meeting, I guess, you know, are they gonna provide any, any service to 911, or is it, or is it like the fire department, you know, whoever the closest unit is, they get there first?
Well, we don't, we don't have that kind of a, an agreement, like the fire department, where they can contract out with the county dispatch, it's the closest, closest department to the call, it's all based on geographical boundaries, so whatever is in the town of Hope, uh, Hope Mills, will be our responsibility to answer their calls, just like it is here. I mean, the sheriff's department backs us up, we back the sheriff's department. I mean, this is definitely a manpower issue for the sheriff's department, I'm not... I think it was a tough decision for the sheriff to make, being so short that he is, but I think it was, the way it was done, was, was done all wrong. Everybody has to have officers, when somebody picks up the phone and calls 911, somebody has to respond to somebody's home, you know, you have to provide that response, so services get tough, you have to prioritize and make sure you have people on the road, but to do this at the eleventh hour and then kind of push those responsibilities down, I was, creates a heavy burden for, for me and my state.
I would like to see this phased in, you know, instead of done all at one time with the knee-jerk, this would have been good if it was phased in. If this is the direction that everyone would go and say, "Look, you know, in two years, we wanna, we wanna stop providing this service, and this is why," and, and the municipalities have two years to figure it out, I guess you could say. I pretty much feel the same way with the sales tax revenue, we should have phased that in too, but we didn't, we didn't phase it in, they just took the 1.9 million, now they're taking 3.2 away from the school board, and the county's just keeping it all. Okay, thanks, Chief.
I, I would like to say too, um, I have a lot of respect for Sheriff Ennis Wright, um, county commissioners, Glenn Adams, the sheriff has always been very supportive, um, and I think what I'm seeing is a lot of us, we're going into wars now, email wars, um, saying some pretty harsh things to one another, but I don't think that anybody will agree that the way that this rolled out was pleasant, it was not. So it is, it's what it is, it is what it is. At this point, we need to attack the issue, and, and find out a solution for these children, not attack each other, and we have to work together. It, it was rolled out bad, there was, there's no good way to say it, it was bad, um, but I don't want us to start getting to, "It was your fault, and you didn't call, and you didn't come," because that's what it becomes, let's focus on this issue, this is a, this is a serious issue. I have a child that attends a high school here in Hope Mills, and you will get several calls to go to that school. So I, I want us to focus on that and not get into, um, a war with each other, let's focus on what the issue is at hand, because I concede that it's becoming that, but I will not take back that the way that it was rolled out was not good at all, I won't take that back, because if it's not, I think we all should agree with that and try to move forward.
I agree, and if you do authorize a feasibility study to allow me to explore ways to come up with some sort of solution, I'm gonna have to talk with the Board of Education and probably the, the county commissioners and stuff, so I, I agree, I think it's best to not get into a war, because we're, we're gonna have to collaborate and come to some sort of a solution, and I think if we can all do that, I mean, the only known that we have right now is the sheriff's department, not gonna do it, right? So, somebody's gonna have to, and we're gonna have to negotiate, partner with those other agencies to come to some sort of collective decision, whatever it is, whether it's us to provide SROs, or, or they go to private security and, and we respond to calls at the school, something's gotta have to give, um, you know, and we don't have a lot of time to do it, so, um, I've already done a lot of research on this, you know, uh, even prior to a feasibility study, just, I mean, that's my job as the planner, and I've done a lot of research on it, trying to get my head wrapped around it, so that if you did authorize a feasibility study, I'd have a direction to go, um, and have some good, good information to bring back to you for your consideration. So, and I, I, I think, you know, if it is approved, I'll let the ground running first thing in the morning, and, and, you know, whatever the deadline you give me, I'll have something for you.
Commissioner Skowal?
Mayor, I just have a question. From all the discussion, this is not necessarily a reason, um, for all the discussion that we had at the special meeting, as far as trying to find funding for, um, security guards and stuff like that, has anyone gotten back with you as far as any of the other possibilities?
No, no one's gotten back with me, and I, and I think that once we, if we, if the board approves the feasibility study tonight, that starts the process of looking at how we frame it.
And just, I comment, just to comment on some of those suggestions that were, I mean, coming up with tomorrow on school, police department, yeah, that, that could probably be done, but you're not talking something that's gonna be done in two or three years, I mean, you have to, you have to come up with a charter, you have to come up with, you know, policies, training, and staffing, and all of that, so that's, that's not a short-term goal in any stretch of your imagination. Private security probably could be done, um, you know, in a, in a timely manner, but again, you're getting unarmed, as the, the gentleman that owns the security company said, they're not permitted to carry guns on school grounds, so you're gonna have unarmed security officers, if you would, that are just gonna be there with no arrest powers, no investigative authority powers, that hold it down until one of our officers provides them.
And by that time, it may be too late.
We're gonna be responding right away anyway, so it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect our, our response, I mean, other than not having an officer right in the school, like you do for an SRO. I mean, but the, the response time would be the same as if we responded anywhere else after some of your calls coming this way.
You know, the function of the SRO in, in our school systems is more of a preventative educational, if they're in the schools, they develop relationships with, with the children that are in schools, really.
It's a definite, it's a definite excellent opportunity for community policing. It's an opportunity, because the sheriff department has had it, we kind of miss out on an opportunity as a local agency, because it's not our officers that are engaging with the, with the school kids every day like it was, you know, the sheriff's department benefited from that opportunity. So that is one of the pros of a municipality having it, because the kids that live in town go to school in town, and then our officers get to build those relationships.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Let me ask you one thing. Um, I, I know that the sheriff is an elected physician, and he does not work for the county. However, I was researching in our general statutes, and it says that one thing that he is required to do is to provide safety and protection with all county-owned buildings. Schools are county-owned buildings, so how can he not do that? If that is something that he's required to by general statutes?
I, I thought the only thing sheriff was required to do was run the detention center and, and the courts. That's, that was my, that was my understanding, uh, you know, I'm sure there's some additional responsibilities, I would have to research that general statute, maybe, uh, or...
They didn't even be, they didn't list it in there, the courthouse, the jail, the prison.
Well, they are listed as a responsibility by statute, correct? But I, I'm not, I'm not aware of any other obligation to, you know, do that at a school or something, but yes, the jails, the courthouse, that's definitely by statute, the responsibility of the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Okay, a lot of discussion tonight. We're being proactive. Do I have a motion to approve item G?
Um, Mayor Bellflowers, I will make the motion to approve the feasibility study regarding student resource officers and crossing guard, bars that become the county school board.
Second? Any more discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Saying not opposed, the motion carries. Chief? You can go ahead, you have your green light. Last item on the agenda are reports and informational items, this is at the very end. Item A is monthly reports under tab 19. Reminders, Saturday, June 8th, is gun violence, who are in this walk in municipal parks are in the night. Tuesday on June 11th, Community Forum, that is coming up, the Parks and Rec Building at 6:00 P.M. Saturday, June 15th, is Juneteenth Library and Legacy Celebration Dirtbag Hails, that's 11:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. Saturday, June 15th, Bit Fest at Municipal Park, and that's 10:00 A.M. to 3:00 P.M. And our next regular scheduled board meeting is Monday, June 17th, from this room, starting at 7:00 P.M. Last, do we have any staff comments?
Um, I spaced when you said the, the thing, but did you mention the Committee of Committees tomorrow?
Uh, it was not on my reminders, but the Committee of Committees is tomorrow night.
At 6:00.
At 6:00, and that's right after the ribbon cutting for the splash pad, which will be cut.
Is that at the chapel as well?
Yeah, um, the Committee of Committees is gonna meet where they usually meet, is that, yeah, that's more of like an internal...
Mayor, I'm saying tomorrow night, but, um, the reason I love this, I think, is that they're gonna form a committee for our Christmas decorations, deciding what, forming a committee that they can decide what they want, and to spend the money that's gonna prove for the project. I want to be the Christmas...
I will try to make it, I have to go back on the other side of town to pick my child up from an appointment, but if we can make it, I certainly will be here, um, we're gonna have another committee.
Lastly, for the board, is any board member looking to attend the Arts Council 50th Anniversary this Thursday at 6:00? Anybody wanna go?
I don't get it, I don't get it.
You gonna go? I'm gonna go. You gonna go? Mayor Protem's gonna go. Anybody else? Okay, actually, you got, you got the confirmations, who's going? All right, any other staff comments? It's been a long night, we've got a lot to discuss tonight, again, I would like to thank Boys Council America for kicking us off, and, and for hanging out with us all night. It's really good, we invite you to come back on June 17th, uh, to, uh, help us recite the Place of Allegiance. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay, we're done.